Good evening, everybody. It's 7 o'clock and tonight's meeting is being televised by Area 58. Present tonight is Bob Dergun, Gerald Joy, Tina Kenyon, David Frye, and myself, Casian Azuela. And our first agenda is ZBA 25-13, 24, 11th Ave. Would you like to begin?
Yes.
You guys don't have a public hearing notice because you already opened this one at the last meeting. It's just a continuation.
We don't have a keynote at the last meeting.
Just continuation.
All right, just continuation, anyway. Ready? Could you come up and tell us what you're doing and what your plans are? And we know that you wanted to push it back 30 feet and the side lot line, it's still 10 feet.
Yes.
We asked for 15.
15, yes.
And the hardship is, you know, it's a self-created hardship that you wanted to put this building where it is. Where is the septic system on this property?
It's to the right of the property. It's, uh...
Turn left to the garage.
Yeah. It's, uh...I think that's it, right there. It's, uh...it was 22 feet from the corner when it was back here. That's what I was told, I had to have around 20 feet. So if I go 15 feet, it would put me close to the leaching field. Could I go 15 feet? Yes, but it would put me right to the edge of my leaching field. So I know you asked me to put it back 20 feet, but instead of putting it back 20 feet, I pushed it back 40 feet, which makes it 90 feet off the road now. Could I go the 15 foot? Yes, but I really...that would be detrimental to me.
All right.
I feel that the garage would be an asset to the area. Excuse me, I choke up, I'm not used to talking.
No, that's all right. I mean, just tell us what you can do, that's all we're asking.
I figured by with the garage, I have my grandkids living next door as well. They're driving to get their license. This will get them off the road as well, give them a place to store. I think, like I said, it could be an asset to the neighborhood. I'm not tearing the neighborhood apart, I think I'm making an improvement. I've been in town for, in that house for 50 years or better, and in my opinion, all I did was improve that area, and I continue to do that. When it's done, it'll be presentable, it's not going to be a shed. It's going to be a garage. I need the 12-foot doors. I have an RV that's 30, 34, so I need the room for my RV. The property's listed as residential-agricultural, so I'd like to try to keep it, you know, maintain my agricultural status there, and I figure if it's a garage slash barn...I live in Maine most of my time, and I have my farm equipment up there, and my circle of life is closing up on me, and someday I'd like to bring that down here.
Well, when I went to the property, I mean, I go by it almost every day, and the East Bridgewater Pumping Company, is that?
Bridgewater.
Bridgewater, is that run out of that place?
No.
No, you're on the wrong...you're thinking right here. This is over here. This is the bridge of it. Bridgewater Pump, it's like, yeah, this house right here, this barn. That one. That's where he's right here. There he is. I think that's one of these people, because they're super close to the lot line, too.
Who owns the house on the corner?
That's my barn. That's my house across the street, 25 11th Ave.
Any members of the board want to know?
No, just, I know we said 15, can you do it 13 feet? 12 feet? We just want to get...
I could get it, I could. I'll get it as far away from that fence as I can without disturbing my leaching field. Could I do the 12 foot? Yes.
I mean, I'd like to see a little bit more separation from the side yard.
Well, the whole neighborhood, you're familiar with the neighborhood?
Oh, sure.
Everything is right on the property line.
We realize that.
Including your own garage in back. In fact, I'm 50 feet from the back, and...
My garage is five feet off...
Excuse me?
Five feet off your house.
We're gonna, we'll give you a chance to talk later.
But anyways, so I'll be further, my back property line will be further back than what's required, and could I go 12 foot or so? Yes. But like I say, I went 90 feet.
No, that's appreciated, you know, I'm sure your name is something like that, too.
So that's what I'm trying to do, because I know if he said that, he would be viewing it from his window. So when I'm done, if I get approved, there'll be shrubbery all along the line. It's going to be nice. I'm doing hydrangeas up in Maine, and maybe someday there'll be all hydrangeas there.
Bob?
What's a footprint, 30 by 32? Is that the footprint, the garage, 30 by 32?
Correct.
Wow, the area is pretty tight down there. 12 feet is a plus, but you'd have to be okay with it?
I have, oh, that's my concern.
Ready?
It's just going to be a big building, no two ways about it. How many square feet is the house?
900 and, just about 990.
And the garage is going to be 96?
Yes. Slower than ours.
And this is for a motor.
And my farm equipment, my truck are going to be plowing for the town. Another reason for the 12-foot doors, my plows, well, I have nine-foot-six plows, and I also have nine-foot plows, so they're a place for me to work on my plow trucks.
So you're looking for storage only?
That's correct.
No parking, any other equipment other than your RV and your truck and...
My cars, my vehicles. I'd say I got my daughter, Frances, who lives in there now, there's three cars there.
No running water?
No.
Just electricity?
That's correct.
And the Bridgewater pump truck's going to be parked in?
It may at times, it's just a truck.
That's a problem.
That's a problem?
That's a problem.
Well, it don't have to be parked in.
We have to make conditions that, what we, we'll have to make conditions on this application if it passes, if it goes through, that you came in with an application that you wanted to put an RV in there and a couple of trucks.
That's correct.
Now you want to put the Bridgewater pumps, you know, trucks in there, that becomes a, excuse me, that becomes a business, and where is Bridgewater Pump?
I can guarantee you, it's not going to be a business. Yeah, it's not a business. That's my property to put my vehicles, there's like five, six vehicles in my home.
You have to, you have to, you know, like, when we put the conditions on, you have to either accept them or not accept them. Tina?
Everything's so tight down there that, I said, everything's so tight down there, I don't think it's going to ruin what the neighborhood looks like. It's getting them off.
I mean, the lots are small, and you're occupying that lot with a house and a big building, and it's tight. Was this septic system ever been disturbed?
I've never had any issues with it.
Was it ever changed?
Pumped out, yeah, in the past, yeah, regular maintenance. Yeah, never had an issue.
Would you rather have, would you rather put a garage or open to an ATU and he doesn't even have to come to us?
Right.
And have more people taking up more water?
I'm not going to...
That's what you have to ask yourself, is because now they can, now people can just put whatever they want.
It's going to have a 12-foot doors and you won't be able to put an ATU up there, you know?
That's the furthest thing I want.
No, but I'm just saying, like, the rules have changed so much that one way or the other, you can use all of your land, it's, can you use it for something that's not going to take up more water and everything else? That might be more beneficial than...
And the side, you know, the side lot lines, you know, for the various, you're creating a hardship, we're not creating it for you. The hardship is being created by you, because you have to be 30 feet from the side lot line and, you know, the whole nine yards, but it's up to, what do you think, Bob and Joey?
I mean, all the lots down there are tight, and everyone's looking for garages, everyone's looking for, you know, something else down there.
Where is the width of the garage, 30 feet?
Yes.
Can you go small with that? Because the typical garage is 24.
Yes, but if I want to go with 12-foot doors, now I got, that's 24 feet right there.
12 feet wide, 12 feet tall?
12 foot tall, 12 foot wide. So my RV is like a, you know, with the, with the side panels, you know, opening up the doors, I need at least two feet from the doors if I'm going to work on, you know, loading my RV, taking stuff out of it, whatever. So I need two foot from the wall side.
Well, you can do one 12-foot and one either eight or nine.
I'd rather not.
Doesn't look as nice, but...
Yeah.
So is the RV parked there all the time along with your truck?
The RV, right now it's stored in Maine. I had it down here this summer, and with the pine trees there, Wayne knows about the sap, it just pours sap. It damn near destroyed my RV. So once I get the garage, if I can, it'll be out of Maine. Like I say, my circle of life is getting smaller, so eventually I'll be leaving Maine and coming back here, and that's where my RV will be parked. Right now I'm paying for storage up there.
And your truck with the plow, is that also located in this location?
Is it right now? No, they're across the street. Will I have a plow truck there? Probably later on. It won't have Bridgewater Pump on it, it'll be my personal truck with a plow, a plow for the town. Right now, everything is across the street. I've been there for over 35 years.
And how big is the lot across the street?
Same size as what I'm doing here.
Maybe we should hear from the people?
Anybody wants to speak?
Yeah, my biggest concern is the size of the building. I mean, that building is going to be almost as big as my house and it is taller. The other issue I have is the rainwater coming off the roof. That's going to come right over to my property, and not knowing what is over there, if there's any hazards, spills over there, which I hope not, my well is right there, right beside the fence. I would prefer it to 15 feet away. I know you said concerns about a septic system, but if memory serves me correct, you just put a new galley system in over there.
I gave some repairs over there.
So I don't think the leaching field would have that big of an impact on the building, but that's it. I mean, the building is, all against my window, and that building is going to be bigger than my house. Even, I don't have an objection to him putting in a garage, but it's just the size that concerns me.
Anybody else want to talk to us?
No, just the Bridgewater trucks are over there all the time, and if there's going to be a big garage, the concern was those trucks being parked there permanently, and in the summer...
We will have to put conditions on this application to pass, that he will, you know, the Bridgewater trucks won't be parked in that building, and it's not going to be used for a business, only storage only.
That's correct.
What's that?
That's correct, it's not a business over there.
Yeah, because there's one parked there right now.
What's the question on the board? Anybody else have another concern?
Tina, are there any other plot plans in there? Certified plot plan showing the septic?
No.
It's the original system.
It's about two miles long.
Like I say, I'm not putting any water in the garage.
That's the only plan that doesn't show the septic.
It is a large building.
It is, I'm just...
It's a large building, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but like I say, I need the 12-foot ceilings.
It looks more like an industrial building than it does a large...
It won't look like a commercial building.
The size of the property makes it look like a large building.
What's that?
The size of the property makes it look like a large building.
Yeah, like, you know, everybody up there, you know, whoever has a garage up there, it takes up the whole progress.
It's larger than the standard-sized garage. Two houses down, there's one on the road, it's only probably 24 by 24.
And that's right on the road.
But it's smaller. And you wouldn't want to do it one day?
No.
It's good for your RV?
No, the RV will take it all up.
How often, how often is that RV used? How often is it going to be parked? Or how often, you know...
Well, during the wintertime, I use it in the summertime, you know? So it'll be in and out there in the summer. It's going to be a garage for, you know, just like you put your car in.
It's just that area is just cottages. It's a small, you know, that whole neighborhood is small, cottages.
I mean, the lots are small, everything else is, you know...
But again, I'm 90 feet off the street, you won't even see it.
You will.
Won't see what?
I'll go by it.
I see this garage.
Look, like I say, it's 90 feet off, you know, our houses are, what, 10 feet off the road? 15 feet off the road, our houses, that's the most, right? So when you're driving by, you know, it's 90 feet off the road.
90 feet is not that big of a difference, you can still see it, you know? This whole building, the building is bigger than 90 feet, and you can, you know, stands out like a short...
It's going to be a nice building. You know, like I say, you know, when I'm done, it's going to be shrubbery there, there's grass there. How much improvements have I done over there? The house was condemned, right? Before, you couldn't even see the house. It was all covered over with, you know, the trees and the brush and the vines, and it looked as, looked like Briggs's house. Right? And now look at it, you know, I got it painted, put a roof on, you know, so I'm doing nothing but improvements. And when I'm done, it'll be nice.
Anybody want?
The only other thing I'm just thinking of right now is, you mentioned that's fucking water runoff. If he's got a well right near there, then that could pose a problem.
I don't know, it's not a drinking well, is it?
It's irrigation.
It's irrigation. So, I mean, as far as runoff, his house runs off into the grass. It's right there, his whole backyard runs into it, you know, his house itself runs off into there, and I'll be further away than what his house is from the side lot line.
I mean, the only way I'm looking at it is if the gutters that you have in there, so that the rainwater comes off more to the back of the garage, and more probably to your lot than his.
What's that again, I'm sorry?
That the water that drains off the roof goes into your lot?
It goes to the back of the garage, just that the way the gutters are put on, it's going to lean to the back of the, so it's going to drain to the back of your garage.
If I put gutters on there?
Yeah.
I probably won't even put gutters on it. I don't have gutters now, can go right to the side of the house. I don't use gutters.
I think that's what they're questioning, is to whether the runoff is going to go into the...
I don't think so.
Well, the runoff is going to go from, you know, his house, or the other people's going to go and go to the side, and wherever it disperses, it's going to be soaked into the ground.
It's all sand, it's all pines.
As it is now, we have a real heavy rains. The way the land is contoured, it forms like, downright down in that, right by where actually where your garage is, there's a gully. If it rains extremely hard, it does form a soft wet area there. That's why, if you notice, when I'm on the back, I have a trench, so that brings the world down towards there, away from the house.
I could dig a trench, too, alongside yours, that'd be no problem. That's what, you know, if that's what it takes, then I could put a trench there.
My concern, my concern is the side lot line, you know, 10 feet is too close to the side lot line, I mean, you can't go more than...
I'll do the 15. Or if I could do 12, I'll do 12. 15, I'm going close, but if you said 12, I'll go 12, if that's fine.
You do 14?
I feel safer 15.
What's that?
I feel better with 15.
I'll go 15. Sold.
In that size building?
I still want that size building, but, you know, I'm trying to compromise.
When that building's done, that land's going to be landscaped, it'll be sloped, but if I have to, I'll put a ditch in along the side there, and it's not going to take much of a ditch.
So it's away from your house as well?
No. So, like I said, I compromised, I went back quite a bit.
We're going to have to put some conditions on this building to...
There's not going to be a business there.
Not to run into problems later. Once you start going in there and all of a sudden, you know, things start going haywire, and we don't want that, it falls back on us, not you or the net, you know? Anybody want to make a motion with some conditions on it?
I'll make a motion. Petition, what number is this? As presented, the size being 30 by 32, with a side setback of 15 feet and 90 feet off the road is presented. Conditions, no running water. Personal use only, no commercial, no business.
I'm not running a business there, this time I'll be parking trucks.
Well, you have to, you have to agree that these conditions...
Okay, okay, let me just, let me...
You know, we...
How many years have I been parking my vehicles there? I'm not running a business out of it, but at times, I put trucks over there so I can plow the road, or park a truck over there because somebody's, you know, parking the parking lot or what, they might drive.
What's meant by...
But I'm not running a business out of it.
Right, but we still need, we still need to put it in there.
We have to put it in writing.
Put it in there.
We have to put it in writing.
Okay. Because the appearance of, if you have a garage and then you have trucks in there too, it's not going to look pretty anymore. It's going to really congest it.
Well, I think right now by me putting the garage there...
That cleans it up, but then if you're going to park cars, you know, trucks there too, that just deteriorates it right away.
You know, let's say, for instance, you take that RV and take it to Maine and park it in Maine for the whole year, and all of a sudden you've got an empty building, you know, you're going to say, hey, well, might as well put my trucks in there for now until, so I bring my RV down, or whatever. Whatever, we're going to decide here tonight. You're going to have to, you know, have to agree to it. If you don't agree to it, then we won't go through it.
Okay.
You want to make...
Any other conditions?
What's that?
Any other conditions?
Anything?
Just talk about no commercial...
Yeah, no commercial venture.
You can't run a business out of there.
I guarantee you...
No, that's what, I mean, we're going to put the conditions in.
That's fine.
Want to write that down for us?
Could you give me a minute?
There you go.
Any other conditions?
What's that?
Any other conditions?
No running water?
I haven't done, you know, all the years I've been there, 50 years, you know, I cleaned the place up before it looked like, it was an eyesore before, it's not an eyesore anymore.
Landscaping, landscaping to be the landscape, you're going to have to landscape it in.
I'll put a fence right down the whole line, that way you won't see it.
You made the grade, so it will be applied away from this gentleman's property?
Yep, yep.
We have to try to help everybody out. We don't want to get blamed for something that, you know, at the end...
But that was not my intention of running a business.
No, we're not saying, we're not saying that, sir. Can you read the conditions?
No running water, 15-foot side yard setback, 90-foot front yard setback, no commercial, it was created away from neighbor's property.
Anybody want to make a motions and, with their condition?
I already made a motion.
Who wants to second it?
Second.
Bob?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you, Bob.
Good luck and hope everybody gets as happy.
Yeah, let me ask you something. Is there a time limit that I have to have this completed, or...
No, you're going to get a...
I think it's two years.
How many?
I think it's two years.
Two years, yep.
And then if it's running out, you can come in.
It's just like, I'm not ready to do it now. My main thing was just to get things approved. Trying to figure things out, do I sell everything, do I move, do I do this?
Variance is two years special permit, I'm not sure if it's two years or one year. You have both, special permit for the size and variance, but also setback.
Once you overgo the permanent limit, then you have to come back in front of the board to do it over again.
So Danielle, there's a 20-day wait period after that. There's a 20-day wait period before anything goes through, once that's over, Danielle will send you all the information.
And they'll notify you that you can get the permit for the limit, record it, then you go from there.
In 20 days, come back here?
Yeah, you pick up the permit.
I think she called you to let you know it's ready.
Yeah, they'll notify you.
Okay.
Okay.
Within that 20 days, if there's any other complaints that come up or have a problem...
We'll have to revisit the site, we have to revisit it again.
Okay. You're all good?
Good luck.
You're all good?
Second application. ZBA twenty-five dash twelve, one oh two Lake Street.
Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM in the board of selectmen's meeting room at the Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-nine Columbus Street, Halifax, Mass. On the applications, we need to find a base of the graph to construct a new single-family home, set to be located at one oh two Lake Street, Halifax, Mass. As shown on the Sessors map twenty, lot one sixteen, book five four nine five six, page one fifty-one. Property is residential zone, or zone residential. The board of appeals will consider variances, can draw special permits from the following sections of the zoning bylaw, and any additional zoning relief the board deems necessary. One sixty-seven dash eight, nonconformity use, E, abandonment. A nonconforming use which has been abandoned or discontinued for more than two years shall be reestablished. Any future use shall be in conformity with the provisions of this chapter.
How you doing?
Good, yeah.
All right, can you tell us what you wanna do?
So I was looking just to move the house more square to the street and make it just a standard-sized house.
When you show us on the map what you wanna do?
So, the outline here shows the new strip. I almost did that.
Yeah, you can blow it up and everything.
I blew it up.
You sure did.
So, the red line shows my proposed and the other line, the shaded line, shows the existing.
I'm making it bigger because I can't see red.
See the shade where it is before? I'm just trying to make it a standard-sized twenty-four by thirty-two and square to the street.
Does this, does that sit on a separate lot by itself?
Yes.
The house in the front?
Yep.
That was yours, wasn't it?
Yep, I sold it.
Okay, how did, wasn't that all in one lot at one time?
Nope, it's two separate lots and there's always two separate owners.
Where's the entrance and the exit to that?
It is...
Oh, wait, sorry.
It is right here. Right this here.
Doesn't that border on wetland?
Nope, the wetland's back here.
How far are you from the wetland?
I don't know, it's close.
Have you contacted the conservation?
I have not.
Well, you have to go through that first.
Okay, I was told to come here first by the building department.
Well?
Hold on, let's look at Mass G I.
Do you have a site plan, what you wanna do and all, that's what you're...
That's it, yes.
That's what you're looking at?
Twenty-four by thirty-two. And I actually, if you look, it's three feet to the property line. I'm bringing it up four and a half feet, bring it out a little bit.
So the entrance to that lot is from the...
Is right here.
Okay, those lines that are going, is that conservancy or is it wetland?
That's not wetlands. There's a house over here. There's a row of bushes between us, row of trees.
One of those dash lines, is that a property line?
No, that's great.
That's a bush field. No, going between top to bottom.
What, this dash line? That's the property line.
So he must have easement right here.
I do have easement from halfway up this retaining wall to the property line.
We had this before, it was, the back house was not a full-size lot. My time of... Were those two parcels joined together at one time?
Not to my knowledge.
How big is your lot?
I wanna say it's six thousand square feet though.
What's that?
Over six thousand square feet, isn't it? So last building inspector told me that I had, if I was over six thousand, I could, he couldn't.
Now, how did you get the permit for the front build, for the front house? Who was the guy that signed off on it?
For the finish?
The building inspector, who was it at the time?
That was two building inspectors ago. Maybe three building? I, I, I'm not sure, honestly. It's hard to keep up with your building department, let me tell you.
There was a contentious thing about this property.
Yes, but when I bought the property, there was...
Yes.
The first building inspector told me that I had to buy both properties.
Right.
And I only bought the one.
Right.
I bought the front one.
And you sold the front one?
And I sold the front one.
And...
And now I, now my wife won't come back.
Who is the one, who is the one that signed off on that building, on that first building? Do you have...
I don't have that. I don't, I'm not sure who signed off on it. Talking about to get the occupancy permit?
Was it? Yes, who signed off on the occupancy permit?
It was, was it Brian was his name?
What's his name?
It was...
It was twenty twenty-four.
It was the two back inspector, inspector.
Perry?
The one that lived in Taunton or Dyden or something?
Ed Bailey.
Ed Bailey, yes.
He signed off on it?
He signed off on that.
Wait, you're trying to like, you're looking at the lot size first?
Yes, the size. Is this the property?
And there is an agreement.
Is this the property gentleman that's coming in front of us? He did all the work to the house, now you're seeing...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There's a reason I'm here.
That's conforming, right? Eight thousand two hundred seventy-seven square feet, the lot.
It's nonconforming, actually.
This was previously fifty-five Standis Street in nineteen twenty-four, per building.
Standis Street?
Yeah.
Where's Standis Street?
It's on your backside.
So why is it saying it's abandoned?
Because nobody's lived in it in ten, twelve years.
Are the taxes up to date?
I just paid, I just paid seventy thousand something in taxes to get this process started. I wrote a check to Halifax for seventy grand to get this project underway.
So the taxes haven't been...
They weren't paid. I paid all the back taxes on it, the trash, all of it. I would've been here a month ago if someone had told me about the trash, but the system doesn't like that.
At one time, those two properties were together.
What's that?
At one time, there was no entrance or exit to that property.
Trash is optional, it's supposed to go against your house.
What do you mean?
You couldn't get to the back property because that one was part of it.
That's why I think it says on, that's why it says on the notice, that it used to be fifty-five Standis Street. Because you probably used to get to it from the backside.
No.
That's a, that's a paper road, that road doesn't even exist.
It's a swamp back there.
Is it?
It's a swamp.
Nobody's driving, nobody's driving down Standis Street unless you're going over with a helicopter.
Well...
Does what I wanna do make sense?
It depends on what you're gonna do.
I'm building one house.
Yeah, how are you gonna get to it? That driveway on the right is like eight feet wide. How are you gonna get equipment back there? The septic is shared also between those two properties.
That's probably why.
What's that?
That was probably why.
Yeah.
I feel like I remember this.
There's also bylaw, you can't have a shared driveway.
I don't have a shared driveway.
He doesn't have a shared driveway, he has easement.
Who's the easement front?
This, from this property to this property.
It was a needed easement or was it, it's a needed easement.
It's a needed easement. And it's basically right, or something, from right in the middle to around to the property line.
So what frontage does that have?
It has no frontage.
It has no frontage.
It has no frontage.
That's why it has no frontage.
But it's an existing house.
But do you need a hundred and fifty foot of frontage?
To build a new house, but I have an existing house.
Yeah, but you, you're...
He could use Standis Street for his... Oh, but if it's a pay-per-view...
It's one oh two Lake Street, I paid taxes for one oh two Lake Street.
But it's been, technically, it's been abandoned for more than two years. That's the back taxes of seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's probably close to that.
So it's been abandoned.
And it was weird because the taxes were paid for some years and then went for other years.
So you know? How's it like grandfathered in?
It's still the house, is grandfathered in? What's abandoned, not to do with it, you have still a foundation there.
Before we do anything here?
They consider it...
That's my opinion, I think you should go to conservation first, then come back to the zoning board.
That's what I was doing, I was calling Mass Baffler, hold on.
Well, conservation can't stop me from building a house that's already there.
What's that?
They can't stop me from building a house that's already there.
We wanna know how far are you from the, from the wetlands and what, how...
What's the legal distance?
It's supposed to be a hundred feet.
I'm not a hundred feet.
We don't know that.
I know that it's not...
We're not conservation, so I mean, whatever the rules are, we can't answer that for you.
I'm probably thirty feet.
What's that?
I'm probably thirty feet.
So anything that's within the fifty, anything that's in the hundred-foot buffer has to get forgiveness from conservation. Anything that's in the fifty-foot buffer, you have to go not only through conservation, but through like the Mass State Conservation, or they have to do a survey and then it's...
So I was told by the last building inspector, if I wasn't moving at the foot and a half in the back, that he could give me a permit, because I was more than six thousand square feet, just by...
Now, you just said that you were thirty feet away from the conservation, from the wetland.
Oh, there's wetland, the whole neighborhood.
I understand that, but we can't sit here and tell you, okay, you can go ahead and build that building, when we don't know what conservation is gonna do. Conservation has to come...
Well, they have to sign off for me to get a building permit, so...
They have to sign off first.
He said, there's a note in your binder if you look from conservation.
What do you think?
A note from conservation.
And you need to submit a notice of intent to the conservation permission to receive proper approval for the proposed work. Because it's, you're within a hundred feet of the wetland. And within two hundred feet of the perennial stream, Stetson Brook. Need you to go find a conservation.
Okay. So we can't finalize anything after that?
No.
No, so generally what you need to have is, because you're close to conservation, you're gonna have to have something drawn up showing how far it is from conservation. And then they're gonna have to tell you.
More money?
I know, let's say to Massachusetts. Where are you gonna put your paybales? Because you have to make sure that nothing's getting disturbed when you're working it.
No, I know how that all works. I know how it works. Well, we can't finalize nothing anyway, we have to build it.
Do you want me to give them this?
Yeah, you can.
Thank you.
The notice of intent, you can find it on the Mass Gov website.
Yeah.
When I did it, I had my engineer file it, just because it was easier to draw the plans.
I've already talked to him, I gotta go by his office and finalize paperwork.
So he can, he can submit the notice of intent?
Okay.
And then they go for that.
That's to protect you from any legal... We can't make a decision, so, okay, go ahead, build this house right now. Conservation will come up to us and say, well...
I still have to get conservation's, everybody's approval before I even get a building permit.
Right.
Whether I can even get a building permit, because we don't even have a building inspector?
There'll be someone.
I think I've been through five building inspectors since I bought my first property.
Yeah, unfortunately.
You're not done yet.
You're right. You are right.
We're not unique. There's a lot of, there's a lot of towns that have problems with their, their inspectors.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I'll be back.
All right.
So should we do a continuation because he has to go there or how?
Anybody else have...
Anybody have, you have a question?
No, I mean, the building's been abandoned for about seventeen years.
Seventeen years?
Yeah. Somebody did live there when I first moved in twenty-two years ago. So it's been abandoned about that long.
Was that, was that property one unit?
It was. It was one unit at one time.
Who owned it as one unit? It's far back, it's like...
Ashy, he's, lives in back, he's passed away. It was his daughter-in-law that owned it. I can't remember what it was. Phoebe, right.
I bought that from Phoebe.
Okay, she had both of those properties.
And that's Ashy, Phoebe, Michael Morrison, and then you guys.
Yeah. But they were, she didn't own both of them.
She didn't.
She owned the back one, she never owned the front one.
Right. Who owned the front one?
I don't know, but when you look up, when you follow back, when you follow it back, there was no, I have no continuous person that owned...
And I think actually that the power for that building in the back came from, that's why you couldn't find a record, is because it came from the main building.
It did, the power and the water came through that.
It was on the sub, I guess, no?
What's that?
It was on the sub, no?
Much of it.
No, it was just, it, it didn't have much power out there, let me tell you.
That's why the guy...
The building is, is, you, you can't live in it. It's, as it is right now, it's falling apart.
Oh, yeah.
It's just the...
It's imploding on itself.
You're gonna condemn the building?
I wanna tear the whole thing down, put a fresh foundation in and build a fresh house.
Let's do one step at a time. How's that sound?
Well, I was hoping, I was really hoping just to get, be able to get the approval, because I could get a permit to build the exact same structure that's there.
Not without conservation approval?
No, without conservation, because if I stay within the footprint, I can.
Well, you get us a letter from them to say that?
I, I, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Listen...
I wanna do a standard-sized house, it just doesn't, I'll be back.
All right.
We'll go about this...
You understand where we come from?
No, I get it, I get it. We'll go about it the right way.
We gotta, we gotta play by the rules.
Okay, you know what we're doing tomorrow?
So we're doing a continuation?
You wanna continue with this and...
Yeah, we can't really do a date until I get that paperwork, because how long will that paperwork take?
We continue it to our next meeting, and if you don't have the paperwork, then we continue it to our next meeting. Like, we have to follow the bottle down, right?
Yeah. I'll, I'll let you guys know when I, when I can, when I have the paperwork off.
Anybody wanna make a motion to continue it?
I'll make a motion to continue twenty-five twelve to January.
January twelfth.
January twelfth, please.
On the table?
Aye.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for having us, okay?
Yeah.
Watch that gap. Thank you, thank you for your service to the town.
Miss Oliver.
That property was... It was. How long that, oh, ten, fifteen years ago, we, we went over.
Couple of times and cease and desist.
We issued a cease and desist and Perry came along and the other guy, Ed, what's his name? He signed off on the permit, he gave him the occupancy permit, which he should have known, done it. And that lot is an illegal lot.
So who sub divested it?
Huh?
Who sub divested it?
Between the building inspector and him.
Well, you say he paid seventy thousand in taxes. Was he paying on both buildings?
No, just the back one.
If it was one property...
Yeah, it was one property at one time.
Then where, seventy thousand on that back house? Then where, 70,000 of that back house?
It's not even, it's a shed. Look at it.
That's why I'm saying.
But it's 17,000.
He must have paid 70,000 on the whole house.
Probably the whole house. And he, he's not, he's not more than 30 feet away from the wetland. He's not gonna...
And if that's the case, how do you get, how do you get approved to build the house off that?
Right, and I've been...
No, she has septic system.
I don't know. That's what, that's one thing, what was on the, on his own board. And we wouldn't run and run and settle with this guy. And he kinda like, $10,000 is a lot of money. And he's, that's ridiculous. On his shed. He's only 30 feet away from...
You know?
Yeah?
Yeah.
How, how are we supposed to give him a permit today?
Yeah.
Four grand a year.
I'll make a motion to a chair?
We have one more thing.
One more thing?
One more thing.
What else?
Well, we have one, two, three, four members. We have two alternates.
Yeah, that's right, two, yes.
Do you wanna have vote David Frye as a member or send it to the selectman?
Yeah, offer to the other one first.
Did we do this last meeting?
What's that?
Didn't we do this last meeting?
No.
No?
No. Do we, or do we?
Don't care, to offer to the other one first, you may allow.
If you count the number for me, because you're just coming to motion. Sorry.
Still, I really feel...
What's the question of the board?
Sounds kind of...
Yeah, don't, we did to the selectman.
Yeah, we, we've recommended to the selectman that he become a, a member, and Mrs. Amari will stay as a, as a captain. You wanna do that?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to recommend David as our fifth member.
Second?
On the table?
Yes.
Yes, aye.
Please, all.
Or we'll recommend it to the selectman. We go from there? Now you can make a motion to a chair.
Okay. We have no bills that I can see that we have to be running, so I'll make a motion to a chair. Second?
All of it.
Aye.
I'm due.